Call to order the November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the City Planning Commission, City Clayton Planning Commission. Ms. Sim, please call roll.
Mr. Bills?
Here.
Mr. Robinson, Mr. Paulus, Ms. Pritchett, and Mr. Muncy.
Yes.
For tonight's meeting, we have members, a member of the public that's interested in speaking to the Planning Commission on the agenda item. So I'd like to take some time to review the meeting procedures. When we get to do business, I'll ask Mr. Dorman to make the staff presentation on the agenda item. And after the presentation, I'll ask the applicant if he'd like to make some comments. And after he's completed his presentation, I'll ask the Planning Commission and the staff, if they have any other questions, or the Planning Commission, if they have any questions to the staff and the applicant. Once the commission has asked initial staff and applicant, I will ask for a motion to open the floor to a public comment. And once that public comment period has started, we will be inviting any member of the public one at a time to make a comment for or against the proposed application. Both of you. Each person will have up to three minutes to make their comments. I'll be keeping time and will have to cut you off if you go beyond your allotted time. In the interest of saving time, I'll ask, well, no duplicated comments. When it's your time to turn to speak, please come to the podium and turn on the microphone, state your name and address of your residence for record, and then you can make your comments to the Planning Commission. Your present, your questions is to the Planning Commission directly and not necessarily the staff or the applicant. The purpose of the public comment is to help the Planning Commission understand your concern, which will help us when we get to the end of the hearing to make a recommendation to the city council to approve, approve with conditions or not approve. And then, once you've had your chance to speak, we'll ask the Planning Commission for a motion to close public comment period. And once the applicant has finished responding to comments received by the public, I will ask the Planning Commission members one at a time if they have any questions of the staff or the applicant. Each, once each member of the Planning Commission has had the opportunity to ask their questions of the staff and applicant, I will call for a motion from the Planning Commission for one of the following recommendations: either approve the application as submitted, approve the application with conditions, or disapprove the application. Then, once the motion has received, has been made and received a second, we'll have the Planning Commission for a discussion on the motion. Once the Planning Commission has thoroughly discussed this, this motion, I'll ask Ms. Sim to please call the roll for the motion. For those in the public that wish to speak tonight, for or against the agenda item, need you to administer, I need to administer the speaker oath. Please raise your right hand as you listen to the oath, and if you can agree with the, to the oath, signify by saying "I do" when prompted. So do you swear to or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Signify by saying "I do." All right. At this time, I'd normally be asking for review and approval of the minutes from July twenty-sixth, but we do not have a quorum from that meeting, so we'll pass those on to the next month. New business, the agenda item that we have today is regarding PC twenty-one zero six, Final Development Plan and Section One Plat for the northwest corner of Westbrook and Union Road, Hunter's Path by DDC Management LLC. So at this time, I'd like to open it, have Mr. Dorman make the presentation.
Thank you, President Bills. Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to introduce the application. Next slide, please. Next slide. Application PC twenty-one oh six was received on November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one for Final Development Plan and Section One Plat for a new subdivision to be called Hunter's Path. The applicant is DDC Management LLC. The property owner is Clayton Land Company, who signed the application affidavit stating they are aware of and consent to the application. Public notice was printed in the Dayton Daily News on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and letters were sent to property owners within three hundred feet of the site and postmarked and mailed on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Location of the proposed subdivision is at the northwest corner of Westbrook Road and Union Road, parcel number M sixty zero three two zero seven zero zero twenty-two, and has an overall area of thirty-nine point four seven acres. Current zoning of the parcel is PDD, Planned Development District. It was approved per ordinance, city ordinance O ZC twenty-one zero four, on September second, two thousand and twenty-one. Staff reviewed and provided to each Planning Commission member the following documents: an application, Final Development Plan, those are the engineering plans, landscape and hardscape plan for entry to the development, Section One Plat Plan, the renderings of the proposed home styles, Arbor Homes will be the builder, traffic impact study, and this is to determine the impact of the development on surrounding roadways, a drainage report to determine the number, size, and volume of retention ponds that are required, and a geotechnical exploration report to determine soil types and the viability of the site for residential construction. Next slide. This is the proposed location. Again, the thirty-nine acre field at the northwest corner of Union Road and Westbrook Road. Next slide. And this is the surrounding zoning showing the subject property and the zoning of the properties around it. You see a mix of RSD residential single units, some commercial mixed use. If you go north of Bayberry Trail subdivision, you see some CMI, which is Commerce Manufacturing and Industry, as well as some additional residential and commercial mix. Next slide. I'd like to analyze the final development plan that's in front of us tonight. The plan is substantially like the previously approved preliminary development plan. It has a hundred and twenty-five single-family lots. There are five retention ponds for stormwater management. The main pond, which is Pond D along Westbrook Road, will have a fountain feature. All the other retention ponds will have an aerator. And the purpose of these devices is to help prevent the stagnation of water being held, which helps to also minimize algae growth and the habitation of mosquitoes. There'll be five new roads and the extension of Fall Gold Drive from the Bayberry Trail subdivision. The new east-west roads are named Willow Road, Falls Road, and Summit Court. The new north-south roads are named Redwood Road and Ivy Road. Internally, each road will have five-foot-wide sidewalks on both, on both sides of the street. There will be eighteen streetlights installed throughout the development. The plan shows approximately one thousand three hundred and fifty lineal feet of a ten-foot wide multi-use path along Westbrook Road. Plan shows a centrally located neighborhood park. This is the point-nine acre park that's kind of in the middle of the development, and is to be developed with a path that would be leading from the public sidewalk on Redwood Road to the proposed playground equipment. And at the playground will be two benches, a trash can, and some landscaping to provide the area with shade and more, and be more visually appealing. Next slide, please. Here's a copy of the, the plan, the overall plan. I know it's hard to read, but you have those, everything up on the screen is in your packets. So there's the plan, an example of the bench, and trash can, and the streetlights, as well as the playground structure that'll be at the neighborhood park. Next slide. After hearing from the residents of Bayberry Trail during the preliminary development plan, the Planning Commission included a condition of approval for the applicant to preserve some of the existing larger trees along the northern property line, which they've done. Those are identified, the ones that are identified to be saved are shown on the tree preservation exhibit in your packets. Site access to the new subdivision will come from two locations. There'll be a new access point on Westbrook Road, and then connection to Bayberry Trail Sterling Woods subdivision via the extension of Fall Gold Drive. This provides a secondary access to Union Road for Hunter's Path residents, and provides the existing residents of Bayberry Trail Sterling Woods a secondary access point to Westbrook Road. Landscaping and hardscape are proposed at the main entrance off Westbrook Road, including an entry sign that is incorporated into a larger stone and brick base, section of wood railing fence, wood rail fencing next to that, and then extensive landscaping to provide year-round color and interest at the entrance. Proposed home builder is Arbor Homes, who began in central Indiana, and they've had good success there in expanding into the Ohio, into Ohio, including the Dayton Market. Examples of the home styles were included in the Planning Commission packet, including their commitments to finish standards and to anti-monotony standard as well, so that the same home style will not be built side by side or directly across from each other. Next slide. Put up a few examples of some of the home styles that'll be in the development, as well as the landscape plan and hardscape plan for the entry. And again, that's all in your packets. Next slide. As part of the applicant's planning and design for Hunter's Path, three engineering studies were completed to determine the viability of the site for residential development and the impact of the development on the surrounding roadways. These were the geotechnical exploration report. So borings were done and sample locations across the property to determine the composition of the ground underneath the surface, to ensure that the soil is sufficient for residential construction, and to make sure that there is no bedrock close to the surface or other physical impediments to development. Results of the geotech study show that this site is viable for the proposed residential development. Second study was a drainage report. This is kind of a technical report that is completed to determine how much stormwater runoff can be expected from the construction of a hundred and twenty-five single-family residences, and all of the impervious surfaces that come along with that, such as driveways, sidewalks, multi-use path, and all of the new roads. The volume of expected stormwater is then used to determine how many retention ponds are needed, their location, size, and volume of those ponds. The engineer also determines what outlet structure types are required for each pond, so that the stormwater runoff is being released to the stormwater system in a manner that is not detrimental to the system or the surrounding properties, and also prevents sediment and debris from being transmitted downstream, which can be detrimental to properties and the receiving waters, such as streams and rivers, that ultimately will receive that runoff located outside of Clayton. The result of this study is evident on the final development plan, just in terms of the open space areas that have been designated for retention ponds. Next slide. And then finally, the traffic impact study. The study considered the trip generation that will be created by the hundred and twenty-five single-family lots and looked at the impact of the expected traffic on the surrounding roadways. A large part of this consideration are the primary and secondary access points that are proposed for this development. A primary access being from Westbrook Road and secondary access going through Bayberry Trail out to Union Road. The city's engineer further requested that the applicant's engineer consider turn lane warrants at the Westbrook Road entrance, which will be the new primary entrance. The result of the study and the turn lane warrant analysis is that no roadway improvements are warranted or feasible. And by feasible, what they mean, and that has to do with the warrant for a left turn lane on Westbrook Road for both the north and south sections of Union Roads. If you go through the report, it does actually say that's warranted, but it's not feasible because it's a split intersection in that area. And what happens is there's just not enough room to properly design and install turn lanes in that short stretch of road. So the engineer, our, the city engineer thoroughly reviewed the traffic impact study and agrees with both the methodology of the study and the conclusions of the study that were completed by the applicant's engineer, CESO. So therefore, no roadway improvements are being requested by staff for the proposed development. Next slide. Want to quickly analyze the Section One Plat that's also part of this application. So it's for, the Section One Plat is for approximately half of the total land area. It's twenty-point-one-seven of the thirty-nine point four seven acres. Section One Plat will have sixty-six of the one hundred and twenty-five lots. That represents fifty-three percent of the total lots. There will be two retention ponds as part of Section One. There will be that point-nine acre neighborhood park lot, extension of Fall Gold Drive into Hunter's Path as part of Section One, and the construction of new roads, including parts of Willow and Falls Road, and all of Redwood Road, which is the main north-south road in the development. Next slide. I looked at Plan Clayton and the guidance that it gives for this project, and Plan Clayton does call for single-family homes at this corner, as you can see in the graphic and the legend that goes with it. Next slide. We also look at the planning and zoning code as another tool in our toolbox. Guidance for the proposed Final Development Plan comes from Section one-one-one-one point two-one, which is our Planned Development District. Section offers guidance for the proposed development, but in the PDD, the Final Development Plan that is approved becomes the design and development standards for the proposed project. So after staff review of the Final Development Plan, it appears to meet the design standards, area requirements and planning requirements of Section one-one-one-one point two-one. Additional guidance for the proposed Section One Plat comes from Chapter eleven sixty-one, specifically Section eleven sixty-one point oh-four, and that is a final plan approval procedure. Now, that's, the section doesn't really have design standards for the proposed project, like the other section does, but it does address the technical requirements for submission of a final plat. And after review of what was received, it appears that the plan does meet the technical requirements of Section eleven sixty-one oh-four. Next slide. So after a thorough review and consideration of the Final Development Plan, Section One Plat for Hunter's Path, we do recommend that Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval with the following condition: that the applicant must address all the comments resulting from the staff review dated November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and email to the applicant on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Those comments must be addressed for the submission of the construction plans, and that will accompany the zoning certificate application prior to construction starting. That would only happen if and when the applicant is able to obtain approval for the Final Development Plan and the Section One Plat. So that's all I have for you tonight. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Do you have any questions at this time?
For sake of clarity, for me, your November eighteenth email will be addressed later after our vote today, if that will.
Yeah, so you received the comments that came from my review and from the city engineer's review. I'm showing those to you, so you get a sense of the type of comments that they are. They're very minor. They're detail-based. Those aren't anything substantive that changes the plan. So that, that would be, those would be addressed when they submit construction plans, and that would be submitted only after you and city council approve the Final Development Plan and the Section One Plat.
Thank you. So would the applicant like to make a presentation?
In my name and address and all that. My name is Clayton Sears, thirty-six oh one, Rigby Road, Miami'sburg, Ohio. Thanks, Seth. Seth outlined this pretty well. Not much has changed from when we were here before you. This really aligns with the preliminary plan, and if you guys have any questions, I can answer them, but it's pretty much the same.
No questions for me.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Most definitely.
So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open this to the public.
I'll make the motion open to the public comment.
I second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Sim, call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
So at this time, we have, are you interested in speaking? Okay. Sir?
My name is Al Humble. I live at fifty-seven seventy Summer Suite Drive in Clayton. I have, one big issue is my house is on the corner. My house is the only house that has no protection from this construction whatsoever. There's a tree line going down the rest of the plat in Mount Royal. And I had Mr. Seth come out and look at it before, and my main problem is, is what's going to keep their construction from my property? Also, was there a speeding survey done on Westbrook Road? Because if not, that's something that's going to have to be looked at, because it's supposed to be a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, and they're doing better than fifty and sixty mile an hour up to there. And if there's not a stoplight or something to slow these people down, there's going to be more accidents than what has been there already. So my two main concerns are the speeding on Westbrook and some kind of a privacy fence to bar my land from the development. And as close as that retention pond is to my property, I wonder about the geese population. And also, there is two Dutchman, one on Westbrook and then one right there on the property line, by the property line, that catches all that water off the field right there, right now. And I have asked Mr. Davis to take care of that property behind there that I've taken care of for the last thirty years, and he has not done it. The grass and weeds have grown up over part of the Dutchman, so that has a hard time catching all the water from the rain. So I, and then also, I've had my neighbors complaining to me since I live on the corner, and I've taken care of them bushes along Westbrook Road for so many years, so you don't have to pull all the way out onto Westbrook to see what's coming up over the hill. So I think that's something else that should be addressed.
If I remember correctly, this is the area in which many of the residents were taking care of the property behind, the area where there was...
I was the only property owner that has, I can show you pictures. I took pictures today, if that'll help you.
And, and wasn't this area, didn't they used to have a HOA, but the HOA is not in effect? It really kind of has lapsed? And so was there discussion that the community could actually redevelop or reconstitute that HOA possibly?
I think that they could, yes.
Okay. And so that may be something that's a consideration.
This community will have separate HOA.
Yes, yes, for the new build. Mm-hmm. But I'm thinking for the existing residents, if I recall, many of the residents that came here during the first presentation, they had been living there for about twenty to thirty years. Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to clarify on the speeding issue. I think Mr. Humble might be talking about Union Road, not Westbrook.
Oh, I'm sorry. Union Road.
Union Road, right?
Yes, Union Road.
Okay.
And, and we don't have access onto Union from this development, do we?
Only through Bayberry Trail with the connection of Fall Gold Drive. And I will state, and I don't want to speak out of turn, because I think Clayton could probably speak to this too, but the stormwater management for the site will completely change from what's there now. There'll be five retention ponds that will slowly release the water out to the existing stormwater system. Generally, that's on, on the roadway, you know, within the right-of-way, so.
Will the structure that he's talking about be abandoned?
If, the Dutchman structures that he's talking about, if they're on this parcel, they'll, they'll be removed as part of the development.
So the whole stormwater system will be redesigned and...
Completely redesigned. There'll be five retention ponds to hold the runoff that'll be piped from the streets to the ponds. And then the ponds have outlet structures that are designed to slowly release the stormwater out to the, you know, whether it's a ditch or a covert or a pipe or something in the road, the road right-of-way. That's, that's our, the city's stormwater system. So the water will be released slowly to that.
Mind if I show you this picture of the back of my house to the plowed field now? See, there's nothing there.
Right. Mm-hmm.
And this is my neighbor's house, where you can see the brush and the trees and everything. So he does have sort of a buffer zone, and that's the reason why I'm requesting some type of a privacy fence that could be put up to sec, separate my property from the new property. Okay? I thank you for listening to me.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does the applicant like, wish to respond to his comments?
Thank you. Yep. We definitely appreciate you voicing your concerns and letting us know. We try to be good neighbors with, in all of our subdivisions. We really want everybody to be on, on board with us. As far as you talked about construction going over, we will have silt fence around this whole property and possibly even construction fencing in this area. If anything does go over your property, which I don't see why it should, but if it does, we just ask that you contact us, and we will be sure to, you know, correct that. The speeding, we really don't have anything to do with speeding. We don't do any sort of speed studies or anything as part of development, so I can't really speak to that. As far as you trimming the property and keeping up with the rainwater, all of the pond area behind you will be managed by the HOA, so it'll be mowed on a regular schedule. You'll never, you won't have to maintain anything anymore. And as Seth alluded, it's, we'll have five retention ponds. The overall drainage from the site will be substantially better. Like he said, it's going to hold back all that water, which will slowly outlet into the right-of-way ditch. That was the amendment.
So his comment about some kind of physical barrier between his property?
Yeah, so that's something different. You know, I, I can't think of any time we've ever done something like that. As far as a privacy fence, I can take it back and see if we can do something like that in this case.
My biggest problem was not with the construction, per se. My biggest problem is, is after everything is done, what's going to separate my property from all these families coming in? Because I think I have some rights in here also that should be looked after. If everybody else down the road has got some kind of a wood line, I have nothing. So what is my right compared to theirs?
We'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
I thank you very much for listening.
Sure.
And, and just to clarify, that landscape buffer will, I know he doesn't have anything in it currently, but that landscape buffer will still be down there as far as an easement goes. So if you do wish to do any plantings or let it grow, you, you can do that as well. But as, like I said, about the privacy fence, that's something we've never really done. Usually, the homeowners put up their own fence or whatever they wish, but I can go back and see what we can do. What was that? I guess it'll be no different than your neighbor next door to you right now.
I have a quick question that might help maybe reach a solution. It's my understanding that the developer is going to clear out some of the tree line, maybe clean it up a little bit. Is that the case or no?
No. So the intent here, the way we perceived it, is that they wanted to maintain as much as possible. So we had it engineered to maintain as much as possible, so.
Is there a possibility that we can maybe plant a couple trees on the property line right there?
And maybe that's a possibility too, you know, you know, I can take this back. This is something that wasn't brought up before, so I really don't have any basis on it, but it's definitely something we can discuss and try to come up with something.
Maybe be something informal between the property owner and the developer.
Yeah.
A gentleman's agreement, maybe? A gentleman's agreement, maybe.
Okay, I wasn't aware that somebody was supposed to come out. Who'd you schedule that with? One of my partners? Do you have any more questions? Unless you guys have any more questions?
No, none for me. Mm-mm.
All right, so thank you very much.
And if I could add a couple things for the record. The plans were reviewed by the chief of police and the chief, and the fire chief as well. The chief of police, police had no comments on the proposed development. I have talked to him, Mr. Humble, I have talked to him about looking at the speeds on Union Road, just as an aside. That has nothing to do with the development, but wanted to let you know. And I'll talk to him again. Okay? And then I might suggest a potential condition, just to suggest that the developer work with the neighbor on possible additional screening for, for his, his property.
Maybe it's not a condition, maybe they make a recommendation. You know, typically for a property owner, if they want to separate their property from another property, then they may erect a privacy fence, they may install some plants, some trees to give you that privacy, and that may be something, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's, that would be appropriate to make that a condition.
Well, I would say that Mr. Humble, as a property owner, could put up a fence and landscaping on his own property.
Absolutely.
But I think what he's suggesting is that the development itself is creating something that he, you know, you know, is a, is a visual thing for him. Now, he's not going to be abutting lots, he's going to be abutting a retention pond.
Right.
And so I think that the request is, would they consider looking at, although not required from residential to residential, would they consider a landscape buffer on his rear property or near his rear property line?
My biggest thing, I would say to the people, I feel I have something coming towards me as far as being separate from that thing and that, if nobody cares where I come from the last three years, it's not really much. And I want to just always learn speed. If anybody does do roads, have some speed, and the summer time, you can always see that my property is always that special. And I'd like to keep that.
All right, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, if we don't, any more questions for staff or the applicant? All right, so at this time, we'll entertain a motion. Either approve the application as submitted, approve the application with conditions, or disapprove the application.
Point of procedure, you'll want to close the pub, the floor to public comment.
Could I have a motion for closing the public comment period?
Make a motion to close the public comment period.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Sim, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Muncie?
Yes.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
All right, so at this time, we'll ask for a motion from one of the members of the planning commission. Again, approve the application as submitted, approve the application with conditions, or disapprove the application.
I actually submitted a motion to approve the application based upon the recommendations of the staff. So those recommendations were sent November 19th, they were mailed out, and so I would recommend that that would be the approval based upon those actual recommendations.
We have a motion. Is there any questions about that? I guess, I guess I'd, I would consider approving it with condition of...
Which condition?
Of some consideration to the request made by our citizens here.
I guess I'm having a, I guess I'm having a little angst around the word "condition." It's, you know, as, as a property owner, you know, you take on that responsibility if you feel that there's some kind of encroachment or something that's unpleasing to you. So now we're going to make that the responsibility of the developer to be able to ease that? That's what I'm not certain of when we say the word "condition." That there's discussions and recommendations, that definitely seems like, you know, DDC doing that would, that would be actually being a great partner and a great neighbor. But to make that a condition, I don't know. I guess that's what I'm having a little issue with.
Maybe I'm not using the term properly. Help me out with this.
So you're making a recommendation to city council to approve, approve with conditions or disapprove the plan itself. Ms. Pritchett's motion was to recommend approval with the condition that I laid out in the staff report, which was that the applicant addressed the comments from staff review dated and emailed to them dated on November 19th. What you're asking is an additional condition that the, that the developer work with and maybe not dictating additional landscaping, but work with the neighbor to the north to at least discuss. Now, in that situation, maybe it makes more sense to, you know, make that a, a recommendation that kind of goes along with your motion, but maybe not included as a condition. I mean, I can see Ms. Pritchett's point in, in that case, but again, that's up to you guys. I mean, if you want to make it a condition that they work with Mr. Humble, that, that's really up to you to decide a, as a group.
I'm amenable to the term "recommendation."
So in that case, do you want to add that recommendation to the motion that you're making to, to city council?
Yes, so we can add that emotion to actually for, to move forward based upon the staff conditions, and then also a recommendation for DDC to work with the neighbor to come up with maybe some type of solution that's going to be amenable.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Not a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Sim, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Muncie?
Yes.
And Ms. Pritchett?
All right, thank you very much. So at this time, I have a motion to end the meeting.
A motion to end the meeting?